All the meeting to order. Good evening. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to the March 22nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30, 3:30, and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on the same channels from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 5th, 2022. Finally, tonight's meeting also will be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube, starting tomorrow. All of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform. First item under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Is there a motion?
Move, second.
I move in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve minutes of March 8th, 2022.
Move approval, second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. Colleagues, any announcements or reports? Mr. DePaulo.
Just real quick on the police station. The building is pretty much weather tight, pretty close to it. Putting the actual roofing on the second floor, concrete is poured. About a quarter or so of the first floor is poured. The exterior is pretty much closed in. It'll be finished within the next week or two. They're going to start foaming and putting exterior brick up. And the first floor, concrete should all be in by the end of the first week in April, weather permitting. But it looks like it's going well. So I don't think I missed anything big, did I?
No, I also provided the board with an update in an email this afternoon that I sent to them on specific development projects, so.
Okay. Anything, thank you, Mr. DePaulo. Anything else? Go now on to the next three items. Town Manager's Report, and then under Special Reports, COVID-19 Update, and then a report in the minutes from the January 25th Executive Session. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board Members. A couple of updates for you tonight under the Manager's Report. I just wanted to advise the board that I've reached contract terms with Visions. The board selected Diversity Equity Inclusion Consultant. I anticipate having a fully signed agreement by the end of the week, and we'll work to schedule the first sessions with them as soon as possible, hopefully no later than the first week in April. A couple of updates on our strategic plan initiatives. First, with regards to the Communication Strategic Plan. Using ARPA funds, of course, the board commissioned the review of the town's communication practices and the development of a strategic approach to ensure we're providing our residents with the opportunity to receive information from the town and engage with the town when possible. We have begun to move from the project planning stage with the UMass Collins Center to review the communication practices of the town. The initial focus will be on developing better ways to serve underserved populations within the community, and this will include both individual and group interviews over the coming weeks, and board members will be engaged throughout that process, as will a variety of community groups. So we look forward to getting this aspect of our strategic planning process to move forward. With regards to the Comprehensive Strategic Plan, the National Community Survey is now closed. I'm very happy to report that we received over 900 responses to the community survey. The data is being aggregated and analyzed, and will be a presentation at an upcoming board meeting to share the feedback that we've received through that process. And then finally, I'll just throw up on the screen here in a moment. Town staff volunteers have been meeting with various community groups as a part of the strategic plan. The interactive feedback website has now been established, which is www.getinvolvedshrewsbury.com. It asks the same questions as we're going through with these group meetings. So far, town staff have met with over 130 individuals across 13 different community groups, with more meetings planned for the remainder of March. I know individuals have expressed concerns with a couple of aspects of our strategic plan, which requests their use of an email. We only request an email so we can ensure there's one unique identifier, and the same person is not responding to a survey or providing feedback 30 or 40 or multiple times. So we don't receive that email. Individuals, especially on the getinvolvedshrewsbury.com website, create a unique username that they can use. It can be nondescriptive. It doesn't have to be anything really relative to any personal identifiers. So just want to ensure folks that were not using your email for any purposes other than the integrity of the strategic planning process, and we hope that you will engage with us throughout that process. So that's the end of my general updates. Since we're in a much improved position with regards to COVID-19 within the community, I will not be presenting this evening, as the charts and graphs just aren't as effective, as they're all flatlined across the bottom, which is really good news. So since March 19th, 2020, we have had 7,298 positive COVID-19 cases. That's an increase of 66 since your last meeting on March 8th. There have been 31 additional cases in the last seven days, which of course is a very manageable and low-spread number for us. Positivity rates well below 2% within the community. Of course, all town buildings are open and operating without requirement for an appointment in advance. So we'll continue to update the community on a weekly basis on Fridays with our weekly numbers, and provide these updates to the board when needed at your meetings. And then finally, with regards to Item 6, I believe it is on the agenda. Given the fact that the town has received a, this is a report on the minutes of the January 25th, 2022 Executive Session. In response to the March 2nd, 2022 Public Records Request, which sought the minutes of the January 25th, 2022 BOS Executive Session minutes, I've reviewed the draft minutes and find they are unable to be released because doing so would defeat the purpose of the executive session privilege at this time. So no further action is needed by the board, and that's the end of my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments? Go to the next item under Meetings and Hearings. We don't have any hearings this evening, but under Meetings, it's a meeting with GFI Partners regarding a request for zoning amendments in the Limited Industrial Zoning District. Mrs. Luss.
Thank you, Chairman Samia, and members of the board. This evening, I'll eventually turn it over to representatives from GFI, which is a commercial property owner within the town of Shrewsbury. Also, would like to recognize that Mr. Cahill, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, is in the room if the board has any questions for that department as well. We were approached by GFI several months ago related to their desire to request some adjustments to our zoning bylaw related to the Limited Industrial Zoning District. They own several large tracts of land within the town of Shrewsbury in which they desire to develop for industrial and commercial purposes. So we have worked with them over the past few months related to their request as it reacts to their properties, as well as other properties within the Limited Industrial Zoning District, and they have submitted a letter to the board with a request to place a warrant article on the town meeting warrant for May to adjust portions of the Limited Industrial Zoning District. So with that, I'd love for them to be able to present to you this evening if you so choose, and then we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Yes, good evening and welcome. If you could introduce yourself, and then the floor is yours.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton. Here, sitting with me is Haley Palazzoli from GFI, and also in the crowd here is Jacqueline Bart from GFI. So as Kristin stated, you know, GFI is a pretty major developer with projects along the East Coast, and especially here in town with a bunch of large tracts that looking to develop. Some of the projects that they've done in the past and in other communities are really part of the trigger for why we're here, and the way it reads with your zoning bylaw. So we're talking about two particular zoning bylaw provisions that only impact the Limited Industrial District. The first is the maximum height limitation in the district, which is currently 50 feet, and the second is a provision that does not allow loading and unloading vehicles in the front of the building in the Limited Industrial District. So those two provisions, what we're hoping the board would consider pushing along here to Planning Board and then after to Town Meeting, would be allowing the Planning Board the ability to, by special permit, alter those two provisions. So in the case of height, you know, this is something that the industry is evolving quite rapidly in terms of logistics facilities and commercial warehousing facilities in particular, and the 50-foot height limitation is somewhat of a hindrance for a lot of those projects. You know, these projects are now going a little taller instead of wider, conserving natural resources and the like, less impervious area. There's a lot of different reasons why it works for the developer, too, don't get me wrong. But, you know, there are a lot of benefits to the town in that sense. So, you know, right now, the 50 feet is a little bit of a limiting factor, and the only way to get above that is a variance, which is a pretty tough standard, and something that when a developer faces that, it makes a project less appealing to pursue. So similarly with the parking, the unloading and loading in the front of the building, it's maybe a little more unique for Shrewsbury, but we have a lot of these parcels that butt up against residential neighborhoods in the rear of the buildings. And so having the loading and unloading in the rear is a noisier, you know, concept for the neighbors. If you put it in the front, the building acts as a little bit of a natural noise attenuation for that, which is, you know, those trucks unloading and loading is the noisier piece of the operation typically. So we've already seen that. There was a Project 440, and there's a picture, a couple of slides, and I don't know if you'll be able to find it easily, but yeah, right there. So this is the 440 Hartford Turnpike where the loading and unloading in the front of the building made a lot more sense, because behind the building, to the screen bottom, is a residential neighborhood. So this design allowed, you know, the loading to be in the front, a little less impact on those residential neighbors. Still works for the developer and the users of these buildings, and it's just something that's not allowed under the bylaw right now. So, you know, really, those are the two amendments that we were hoping to discuss with you. We can certainly spend more time doing so, but we wanted to give you a little flavor for what they were. We understand, you know, we'd need to be going before Planning Board and discussing with them at a public hearing as well. So we understand that this is the first step in the process, but we certainly wanted to come and talk to you, get your support for these ideas.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. DePaulo.
I don't know if the question is for you, Attorney Broder, or if it's for the staff, though. I mean, what are you anticipating for maximum height?
It's a great question. So we purposely didn't put a number out there, because honestly, things are changing in the industry quite rapidly. I'm sure you've seen in the business journals, et cetera, some of the projects approved in local, other local towns where, again, they're going higher, two stories in some cases. And, you know, it's by special permit, so there's still control with the Planning Board, but having a number put on there, we sort of shied away from that, but we're certainly willing to discuss it if that's important to the board.
So, if I, me and Mr. Cahill, and Ms. Luss, has the fire department given any indication of how high they'd be willing to see a building go?
I think the maximum we have in our zoning bylaw is 60 feet.
It's 50.
50.
One area by special permit, I think, is 60.
I think you may be right on that.
So I think the highest we have is 60 feet in the town. We're continuing to do additional research and outreach to our departments to understand the pros and cons and benefits of this matter.
Couple of stories, I don't think is a big deal. Not in a big site, but it just...
So these buildings, too, that they're sprinkler, you know, they're modern?
Yeah.
Is there going to be new structures, subject to all the latest and greatest in the regulations?
Okay, good. Any other questions? Mr. LeWop.
Well, to follow up a little bit on Mr. DePaulo's question, what are the industry trends that you're seeing relative to height?
Sure.
I can talk about that, yes. So it was a little bit different even 20 years ago. The standard for industrial warehouse height was around 28 feet, clear height. And what, for those of you, probably some of you already know, but for those who don't, clear height in the terminology we use in my industry is from the finished floor to the top of the ceiling below the Joyce MEP electrical. So it's really the area that gives the tenants space for their pallets, the stacking in the warehouse. So that's gone from 28 feet 10 years later to 32 feet was the standard, to in the last 10 years, closer to 36 feet. In the last five years, Class A users are requiring 40-foot clear height as a minimum. This industry is moving so fast, as you can imagine, with modern technology and the way that, you know, we get products to our home and then the rise in e-commerce, that some tenants are now asking for mezzanine. So you're seeing multiple levels inside the warehouse, and that's because we have better technology to reach these higher levels with, you know, automization and other tools like that. So it really depends on each proprietary user's requirement, and they all have their own systems that they do inside the warehouse. But I would say that 40 is the standard, up to, you know, above 65 feet in other areas. And that's why we believe it really belongs with the Planning Board under a special permit, because every site is different. Not every site makes sense to have a 60-foot-high building, but in some areas in town, it might make sense. We just want the flexibility to be able to respond to these Class A user requirements that are in the marketplace.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. So I know you have developments in a lot of different areas. I'm imagining that bylaws are a little antiquated to meet the market demands. Have you gone to other communities already? Can you point to some of those? We could take a look at what they've done with their bylaws?
Sure. So just, I know that Todd has much more experience with this, but we're having, GFI is having, you know, conversations with the Commonwealth, across the Commonwealth. In Charlton, we recently had the bylaws updated there. For the project that Fletcher-Tilton was working on, they went up to 110 feet by special permit, and then in the Limited Industrial, it was 75 feet with a special permit. I'll let Todd respond to any other communities.
Sure. We just recently changed the bylaws in Sutton, and I'm going to struggle. It was either 70 or 75 feet. I apologize, I don't recall off the top of my head, but it was also by special permit. So it's by right to a certain level and by special permit thereafter, pretty much what, you know, you're talking about here. That particular project was 600,000 square feet of warehouse and spread across three towns, actually, which was pretty tricky. I'm sure we've done it in other towns. I just don't recall off the top of my head. But most of the projects that we're seeing right now that are warehouse or distribution or logistics, however you want to phrase them, they're generally at least 60 feet, and most of the time, you know, people are pushing us up to try to be 70, 75, responding to the market demands and the needs. And it is, it's changing all the time.
So is it, what other changes are you seeing with bylaws, just in terms of trends? So this is surgical change that's being requested. Any other trends right now that you're seeing that maybe foreshadow what we can expect to see? I won't hold you to it, I'm just curious.
Sure.
Let's see, parking has been looked at in other communities that we've worked at, because the parking requirements are typically higher than what is actually needed in some towns. It really depends, I know I keep saying that, on the tenant's requirement. Sometimes you have warehouse users that show up and they only need 100 spaces for their employee parking spots. Others show up and they have, you know, 1,000 employees planning to come to the facility, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to let you know that we did affirm that the Lakeway Planning Overlay allows for 60 feet in height right now. That's our highest district currently, 60 feet, five stories.
Okay, thank you. So that's the only questions I have, and then one request I'd ask. Mrs. Luss, if you could work with Bernie to just see other communities, see what else we can pull, see what other communities are doing with respect to this, just to give us perspective, maybe things we're not thinking of, given this is the presentation here. It's being requested, we understand, and it's going to be competitive, to make sure that you get these type of tenants that are important for the community to generate tax revenues as well as Class A tenants. So we understand that.
Absolutely.
The demands from the tenants are coming sort of fast and furious, and it's one of those things where, you know, you have land, you sort of land-banked it for a period of time, just waiting for something to come along. Tenant comes along and says, I need 200,000 square feet. I need it 70-foot clear height, you know, GFI is going to say, geez, we probably need nine to 12 months to get that ready for you, in terms of permitting, not just construction. And their timeline is much faster than that. So it's just, it's looking for a competitive advantage to be ready for those projects as they come along.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point?
I'll just wrap up by saying-
Yes, please.
We're fully prepared to submit a memorandum to the board with the Planning Department's recommendation for this, and knowing that it will go to that public hearing process with the Planning Board, and that you'll have a further recommendation on the article if it is, if you do decide to place it on the warrant at your next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Hey, good. All right, thank you very much.
We're happy to come back if, you know, like, further information or further discussion or like...
Yeah, we'll be in touch and we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming in tonight. Next item on the agenda is another meeting, a meeting with Jeff Howland, Department of Public Works Director, and Dan Rowley, Water and Sewer Superintendent, regarding hexavalent chromium piloting. Evening.
Long time coming. We will wait until we can be live, that's what we were waiting for.
Good to see you. It's been a while since we taped the show last, what, June or whenever?
Correct.
Great to see you.
Thanks for having us in. So I have Dan Rowley from the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and Justine Carroll, our water consultant from Tater &amp; Howard. And we're here to discuss the pilot testing results that were conducted with Tater &amp; Howard by Adage, which was their consultant for the hexavalent chromium testing, or pilot testing at the water treatment plant. We started the pilot testing in September of 2020, using two different media, a biological treatment method called biota, and then ion exchange. The pilot testing was completed in 2020, and we received a report in July of 2021. Over the last several months, we've been going through it, trying to understand it ourselves. The issue that we had with the pilot testing is what, in order for us to do the pilot testing for hexavalent chromium, we needed to seed our water with 100 parts per billion of hexavalent chromium. The current finished water that we have coming out of that plant averages about 3.5 to 4 parts per billion, which is not enough to do a pilot testing. If, for those who have been on the board a while, we started the actual pilot, the first time we started the pilot testing in 2016 or 17, when we had the old water treatment plant, and we got partway through the process and we ran out of hexavalent chromium in the water. So the pilot testing failed, and we had to abandon the testing, trying to figure out why our hexavalent chromium numbers dropped so significantly in our pilot testing. And then, to piggyback on top of that, we had to remove the old treatment plant where the pilot testing was located. So then, therefore, we abandoned it for a couple of years until we were able to get the new treatment plant up and running. So in order to meet or to pilot test, again, we had to seed the water to 100 parts per billion. Yes, 100 parts per billion. We were able to get between 93 and 96% removal using the biota, which was 96, and 93 using ion exchange. However, because our hexavalent chromium concentrations are so low and not consistent, the biological method, which gave us the higher removal concentration, is not necessarily feasible as the biological method requires, uses bugs, and they would eventually probably die, in which we'd end up with a worse problem if the bugs die within the water column. Therefore, ion exchange was the method of choice. Based upon the size that we would need for the ion exchange, we would double the size of the treatment plant that we have today. So it's like 40 by 80 would be the size just for the hexavalent chromium removal, at a cost of about 7.7 million, and an annual cost of $1 million a year for that treatment. We had a conversation with Adage, who's the company that conducted the pilot testing. As I was concerned with the low concentrations of hexavalent chromium that we currently have, are we still going to see a 93% reduction or removal of hexavalent chromium? Because all the studies that I was able to read, I was able to find, and that Adage supplied me, all had concentrations that far exceeded 100 parts per billion. Because most of the hexavalent chromium removal are at industrial sites that are trying to remove hexavalent chromium from industrial sites. And we're talking, in some of them, we're 1,000 parts per billion or even higher. Adage, it indicated that there is pass-through of hexavalent chromium that will still go through the media. So we would expect, we potentially could expect between one and two parts per billion reduction in our current finish, or current water of between three and seven. So we would be removing about one parts per or two parts per billion from that number, so we will still have hexavalent chromium in the water. And I would like to say that there is no standard for hexavalent chromium. The MCL, or maximum contaminant level currently, is 100 parts per billion for total chromium. There is no standard currently for hexavalent chromium. The state of California is the only state that currently has a standard, and I believe right now it's an advisory, and theirs is at 50 parts per billion. They tried to get it down to 10, but that was deemed to be unconstitutional, as currently there is no method to get it down to that level. There are no methods known that would get us down to a non-detect level. I believe that at one point, there was a question on reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis is highly... Reverse osmosis works very well in the removal of hexavalent chromium. The problem with reverse osmosis is we would waste six times the amount of water that we actually would use. So if we need 4 million gallons of water for the general public, we would need to pump 24 million gallons of water and waste 20 million to the upper Blackstone. That's how reverse osmosis works. So therefore, it is not a consideration, and it's, A, our maximum we could pump out of the Blackstone is at 4.34, with a maximum up to 7. So we would not be able to meet the demands of the town if we went to reverse osmosis. So we don't, that's not even being considered. Do you have, really, I'm going to open this up for questions, and we brought Justine here to answer all the technical questions.
Thanks. Any questions? Mrs. Cassavan.
So, remind me, though, the reason why our hexavalent chromium dropped so much was because we switched wells. Is that correct?
Do you want me to answer that, because the first pilot was kind of before, Dan wasn't here when we did the first pilot, and Jeff was still in his other hat. So when we were first planning to pilot, we were actually not using the drinking water wells. We were using the, there is some, four test wells that were drilled at the property line, on the Metso side of the property, where we had historically been seeing slightly higher numbers. I think at one point in 2016, we did see 100 parts per billion from those test wells. That was kind of when we first started, seeing it, and even the numbers in the production wells were slightly higher then. We think that between the drought that happened then, and the water table was a little bit different, the concentrations that we were pulling were slightly higher. So then by the time- So then by the time that we came to do the piloting, we had to install a slightly larger diameter well, the two inch well that was, wasn't big enough to put a pump to pump. So we put a four inch well in, in the exact spot where we had previously seen 100 parts per billion. And when we were testing and the pilot was running and we couldn't figure out why the finished water was coming out so odd. And then it takes a little while to get hexavalent chromium samples, like official lab samples, you have to mail them away, it takes three weeks to come back. So it took a little while for us to kind of take some samples and figure out that the, the levels in the test well had dropped so much. That we actually weren't getting any detection in that four inch well. So then we had tried numerous ways to kind of get around it. We tried to put a smaller pump in the two inch well. Because there was some numbers in the, in a different, one of the different wells and it just kind of, we ran out of time. And then the plan at that point was going to be to seed it as well. We were going to basically make a batch of water to feed the pilot unit that had hexavalent chromium in it. But at that point, the other plant was coming online, we needed to take the building down, there really wasn't a provision to move it. So we just kind of stopped and then we, we started again a little bit, a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DePaul.
We have, we don't, DEP or somebody has wells further up gradient from where we think it's coming from, right?
That is correct. And to follow up on that, so DEP was spending a lot of time on trying to obtain where our, where the potential source is coming from. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, they have stopped that program mainly because PFAS came on and that, that took precedence.
Well, my, my, my question was, um, it was going to be, are we, is anybody still monitoring those up, up gradient wells?
So DEP was, took a hiatus and our understanding is they're going to go back to doing that again.
How long did they stop? The reason I'm asking is.
For a couple of years.
Have we seen, if we seen up gradient get better, worse or stay the same? That was really my question.
I, with the last time I spoke with DEP, I, I, they had not mentioned sampling. They had mentioned that they were trying to pursue another location for some additional test wells because they, they're looking up gradient, I think in a slightly different direction. Because I think they've proven it hasn't coming from this way. So that was kind of their next step was to more find another spot. I don't know when the last time they sampled the wells that they do have. I know that the town has been sampling the ones at the property line twice, twice a year. And it, it's been fairly steady on the lower side from the, the wells that we have.
Correct. We, we have not, one of the concerns that we had back in 2016 was we did see elevated levels from the Metso sites and further to the northwest. However, I think obviously the concern then was, is it coming towards us? When's it going to be here? We've been monitoring, taking samples on a fairly routine basis since 2016 and continue to do so. And we have not seen a vast change in the hexavalent chromium concentrations. And one of the concerns was, all right, let's take it off of one well, will, will that move it to a different well? So we really don't want to. Is that going to pull to a different location? But on average, since 2016, I believe the average concentration of our finished water is 3.9, 3.7?
3.6.
3.6 parts per billion.
Any other questions?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Flynn.
I wasn't, it's not clear to me. Will you continue to test for this on an ongoing basis?
So my recommendation or our recommendation is yes. We would like, we want to continue to, to test on a quarterly basis. And if we start seeing an uptick or creep in the concentrations, then we'll be back with a different suggestion or recommendation. But we still have only six years of data and we haven't seen that creep in chemistry. It's sort of a short period of time. But we have not seen those numbers deviate very much.
May I ask a question?
Sure, please.
So, understanding that there's not a set standard, in your mind, what would be a level where you would change your recommendation to take more proactive action or to invest in these treatments?
Yeah, so the current maximum contaminant level of chromium is 100. I mean, obviously, if we start to see this, we're at three and something and it gets to 10, then it gets to, we'll come back to, wait a minute, we need to start thinking about this. And I think the pilot testing was a useful tool because it gives us a, you know, what are we going to be able to do in the future if we need to quickly? We won't, to pilot, to add to the treatment plant, we'd have to pilot test. We've already done that process step. Because that takes six months to a couple of years to do pilot testing. So we're going to be ahead of the game, so to speak. And I think that if we, again, we start to see creep, we'll be back. And I want to say if we start to see, you know, 10, then it's, you know, we'll, we'll be able to see it fairly quickly that we're starting to see creep in the number. Hexavalent chromium is very heavy, so it sinks, tends to sink to the bottom of the aquifer. And we, and there seems to be something that's blocking it from getting to where we are. Or it's just so heavy, it's just not moving.
Yeah, and I think too that having those, monitoring the wells at the property line is going, you know, it likely would be an uptick there. Before you even see the uptake in the production wells. So that's a kind of a secondary monitoring location that, you know, if that comes up, maybe change your frequency. But, you know, then you can come up with a different plan. It likely, hopefully, won't just be, you know, you go from three to, you know, some crazy high number, you know, months later. You're going to see, you're going, it's, it's slow moving. It's not, you know, it hasn't changed in six years. It likely isn't going to have a drastic change in a three month from sample to sample.
I just, I just want to add one thing too. We obviously have a very comprehensive scheduling plan through Mass DEP. And we're only obligated to test one time over a three-year period for inorganics, which includes total chromium, which is the sum of chromium six and chromium three. So that, that tells me that, that it hasn't been flagged in the past because usually if there's something of concern, it'll be on your schedule. You'll be down to monthly, weekly, but I mean, we're one, one time over a, a period of three years, so.
But we will do it quarterly.
Yes, well, yes, no, no.
Yeah, so we, we will do quarterly.
I wrote that down, so.
Yeah, no, we will, no.
So, just so you know, so we have to send the samples to Indiana. There's only two labs in the country that can, that can test for hexavalent chromium. One's in California, one's in Indiana, so we have to send it out to Indiana at roughly $100 per sample.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lobo.
Okay, just, I, I just want to make sure I've followed all of this properly. The DEP standard, for lack of a better word, is 100 parts per billion.
Correct.
We are currently in our finished water at 3.6 parts per billion.
Correct.
The, to do the Ion Exchange, we'd need to double the size of the plant, spend 7 million plus to construct. Put a million dollars of annual support into it and we potentially could reduce the 3.6 by one or two.
More than likely at 3.6 would be one or less than one. Correct. I was going by a number of between five and seven. So yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So, one comment and then a couple of questions. So going back to town meeting a few years ago, updating town meeting, if you could post this information as town meeting had requested that they be updated.
Yes.
Post this as you've done in the past. So just so I understand it, is there a plume of chromium that's just pulled together? Is that what it is? So, but that hasn't migrated anywhere. That's just sitting there.
I, I mean, I, I'm not a water chemist, but that does seem to be the general idea of what, what is happening. And that, you know, DEP has been trying to investigate where it's coming from. They've looked at historical property records as to what, you know, usage of properties could be there and they went after, you know, what do they call them? Response, potential responsible parties. And so far, what, and then it's on that particular property owner's dime to basically prove it's not from them. And that involves more sampling and they have not found a confirmed responsible party. So this plume could have been here, you know, since the start of whenever they were using hexavalent chromium process. And it may never have moved, it may have taken, you know, 50 years, it may have, so it, though, we don't entirely know the full extent of it. Because, you know, they're restricted as to where they can put wells to, to do it. You know, it can't, they can't go on private property, you know. So it, it kind of, you know, they're doing the, what they can to investigate it. And again, I think that, that group that, that does the hazardous waste, you know, searching is now also the group responsible for trying to find the source of all the PFAS contamination. So they're a little bit stretched thin. It's still on their radar. They, they, they have been trying, you know, to, to reengage conversations with potential test well sites. So that's kind of where they're at now.
And so I understand, is there evidence that there's additional chromium being, being down gradient that we're getting from other sites? Or it's from the plume that is leaching into wells?
From the investigation that was done in 2016, 17 and 18 with both Tater and Howard, DEP and at that time Metso's consultant. There is a very large concentration on Metso's property, but it's not coming from Metso. It's coming from up gradient of Metso. It appears that it's probably following the same plume as the VOC that, that we, was found in, in the eight, in the 1980s. So it's probably very similar to that same plume. It's very narrow. Based upon the investigation, both north, let's see, I get direction, I guess it'd be north and south of that plume determined that it is, it's. Say on the armory side, there's very little on that side. If you go on the opposite side of, of Metso and the Bodig Drive, the old cul-de-sac there, there's almost non-detect there. It's coming around their building from up gradient.
Okay. And then just one other question. So if the plume's in its current spot, what is realistically, how can they remediate that anyways? I mean, if it's just sitting there, subsurface, what could they actually do? And I guess the second question, is there anything available under ARPA, given the money that, for this?
Based, not being a hydrogeologist or necessarily an expert on hazardous materials. There are methods, it's extremely costly. And basically, you would be pumping the water out and then reinjecting it back and trying to treat it. The problem is, is most of it is converting it from hexavalent chromium to, to chromium three. The problem also then becomes, there's, there is ways that it then converts back to hexavalent chromium, or chromium six on its own. And that, and that's part of the, part of the, the problem. There are ways to do it in situ, but it's very, it's not very easy. And my understanding is the depth that the hexavalent chromium, when we found it, that the deepest was around 90 something feet. The shout, the deepest that, at least this goes back from my memories from Bob Dzieski, the, the deepest anybody was able to treat it was less than 50 feet in the ground.
So given the economics and given our levels and given what the standards are and well below that, am I comfortable with the current course? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. DePaul.
Do you have a question?
You can go ahead.
No, go ahead, that's fine.
Mrs. Cassavan, go ahead.
All right. I, I wanted to just talk about what's number three in your memo to us is basically what's the next chemical or substance that we're going to discover. And I really think that we're sort of in this situation where we're now starting to see the effects of chemical substances that have been used for years that people didn't realize were going to cause problems decades later. And here we are. I think if I understand correctly, we're pretty unique in the hex-chrome world. Like, we're not going to go next door to Westboro and they're not having a hex-chrome problem. Like, it's us? Is that accurate or?
I can't, I'm not sure I can answer that correctly or completely. Because in Massachusetts, we only test for total chromium. If your total chromium exceeds 100, then you start investigating it deeper. But because total chromium includes both to, chromium three, which is stable, and hexavalent chromium, which is not. If your total chromium is less than 100, it could be both.
But this isn't like a PFAS situation where everyone has it and if you don't think you have it, it's because you didn't test for it.
I can't answer that, to be honest. Because if you had an industrial site, you may have it.
Okay, so it's linked to that.
Yeah, my guess is if you have a, a well, you might have more opportunity to have it than a surface water. Because on surface water, it would sink to the bottom and probably into the sediment and you probably wouldn't see it. But if you have a plating plant, if you have anything where you do a lot of stainless steel welding, that is, it's a byproduct, it has, is hexavalent chromium.
Thank you. Just to follow. So I guess what I, the point I'm trying to make is, I mean, I'm looking at the 7.7 million dollar estimated cost to deal with just this one thing. The result isn't going to give us something that's significantly better than what we have currently. My concern would be, you know, what about next year if you come to us and there's another? Like, this could end up being something that happens regularly and I think we need to be really mindful of where we're going to direct our dollars in order to make sure that we have the greatest impact on the overall water system. I think that the quality of our water has greatly improved over the past probably five years. And I, and I credit, you know, the plan that you've put into place and, and followed through on. You know, the health of people drinking our water is extremely important, I think, to all of us. But again, if we're looking at a 50 parts per billion California standard, which is where people typically know this hexavalent chromium from. You know, and we're at 3.6, you're saying, I mean, I'm comfortable with that. I, I'm not sure that it makes sense to go forward with a 7.7 million dollar answer to really just have the same result.
When we have the PFAS pilot testing data complete, which will be August, I believe, at least the, the pilot testing will be done.
August, correct.
Uh, that, yeah, that's the plan. I mean, we did extend it just because the, the PFAS, it's a similar problem with the hexavalent chromium. The, the PFAS concentrations going into the piloting is so low that it's taking a while to, to get breakthrough, which is a good thing. That means the treatment in the pilot process is working. Obviously, with hexavalent chromium, you can control the seeding process. Obviously, we were not going to bring PFAS in to, to spike it. So, so we did it, we're, that one, this pilot is taking a little bit longer. Ultimately, we'll be piloting, I think, for almost a full year by the time we kind of wind down. Just to get the best data we can. We're doing five different media to figure out which one is going to work the best, you know, in Shrewsbury.
I think when we come out, that might, that's probably going to be a different conversation than what happened now. And then every five years, EPA comes out with a different chemical or different element to test for. So where this, the hexavalent chromium came out in 2015, 15 or 16, is when it was discovered that we had it. Prior to that, it was, we did not test for hexavalent chromium. It was not even on the radar. We may have had this for decades. We don't know. We've had total chromium, so we're assuming that we probably had it, but we don't know for sure. PFAS is going to be a different conversation, I think. We all, we know what the next UCMR, which is the standard that we, because of our size, we have to test for. There's going to be another chemical that will come out and, and what happens if we have that one? And then what happens five years after that? That is the concern, especially when we're at levels low, low MCL, we need to concentrate on the ones where we exceed an MCL.
Thank you.
Mr. DePaul.
Comment, I got some other questions on the testing, but I, I don't think, I, I think the appropriate thing to do is just stay aware of what, of what's happening in the industry in general. And just be aggressive like we were on this for testing and that. I don't think, it's not going to be helpful to worry about what's going to happen this year and actually, we just don't know. PFAS seemed to come out of nowhere. And we're just, we're going to have to deal with it. However, we, it really wasn't that long ago that we had to build a water plant because we didn't have a water plant before that, the first one, right? It was because of the VOCs. And we had wells all over town, or several different places in town. So, I mean, we just, we deal with it as, as best we can when it comes up. And I think you're doing the right thing by aggressive testing, both taking the samples and, and doing the pilot tests. I don't know what more you can do. We just have to know that at some point, point in the future, we might have to address something else. But going back to the, the test wells. Did I just send you correctly that we don't have detection beyond the, basically the borders of the, of the Metso property to those other industrial properties? Is no, is, first of all, are there test wells anywhere else?
There are.
Really Metso?
Nope. So DEP also put, is it Bod, Bodig?
Bodig Drive.
There's a Bodig Drive, there's a few test wells right in the side. It's on the, so that's the other side of Metso. So there has, in the past, been high numbers there as well. So that kind of proved that it's past Metso. I don't know if they've put any in further.
When you were talking, Metso, you were talking, the Metso property. I was thinking more to the end, Baudage Drive.
Yeah, so DEP did put some test wells in Baudage Drive, definitely in Shrewsbury. I'm not sure if they got permission to put them in Worcester.
I don't remember.
I can't remember. I know they were looking to try to get it, and the same thing with what is now Wagner Motors Motorcycle Dealership, and I'll be honest, I can't recall what there used to be there.
There was another, there's another building beyond that, that definitely was a plating company.
That is correct.
That's why I'm surprised that, I know people who worked there, so.
Yep. So there was, I don't know exactly which site it was, but after Metso and before there now, there was one other location, right, that they did look at. And then my guess is that location had to install their own wells to basically prove that wasn't them. I'm not a hundred percent sure where that was.
That's kind of interesting.
Right. So Metso's, how we knew Metso had such a high number, they already have monitoring wells? So they voluntarily tested back in 2015, 16?
But just one last question. There was a time, not that long ago, that that Metso land, well, it got mined, and it was, it was a gravel pit at one point. Wasn't that long ago? You know, forty years ago, maybe, thirty years ago?
Nineteen seventies.
Okay. So if it was, if it was virgin land at that point, it couldn't have come from there. You couldn't have got that much hexchrome from excavating the gravel and hauling it out. So it had to come from somewhere else.
Yeah, the...
In those concentrations.
Right. Well, Metso, see, Metso was able to also prove to DEP that they didn't weld stainless steel, so therefore they were excluded, and they clearly were not, they're just a, they're not the source, they are just the pass-through.
Right.
So they had, but they had to go to DEP to prove that. So they did it their own, they had their own test wells, and they verified that it was not coming from their facility and had historic records of, you know, A, where we had the high concentrations, actually, it was in the corner of the new building, not the old building. So there was nothing in and around the old building location.
Yeah. And again, I do believe they did it at another site as well. I just don't remember which, I'm assuming, I believe it probably was the plating, because I think that would be the logical...
Some of us are old enough to remember when there weren't buildings there, so, I mean...
Yeah. So, I mean, DEP does, you know, property searches and things like that, and then they go, but then it takes a really long time for the property to come back and say...
Right.
Because then they'll prove it, because if it is them, then that's...
Well, we might have enough. So we just have to, we're to deal with it, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have to not make him Paul come out at night anymore?
He was originally coming, and then it was last, at the end of last week, he asked if I could sub in last minute, so.
Nice being the boss.
He originally wanted to come. He was planning.
I think he was afraid, the last time we had a meeting, that he came, he thought it was live, so he was here.
Yeah.
And it was virtual, so he had to drive, quickly drive back to Haven. So he was, I think he was afraid that was going to happen again.
Next item on the agenda is a meeting with the Community Preservation Committee regarding feedback for the Community Preservation Plan. Mr. Jason Molina, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Good to see you.
Mrs. Mooney's here as well. Good evening.
Good evening.
Introduce yourselves, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Jason Molina. I am the Chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee, and with me is Deborah Mooney, also as the Vice Chair of the Committee. And so before we get into the matter of why we're here, I thought I would just take a moment to just refresh the board and the public about the Community Preservation Act in Shrewsbury. In 2020, a ballot question before the voters asked whether to adopt the Community Preservation Act, and the question passed, and Shrewsbury joined 186 other communities in adopting CPA. CPA provides a dedicated funding stream for community preservation needs, specifically for open space protection, outdoor recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. Money raised through local receipts are anticipated to generate $789,000 in this current fiscal year. The benefit to Shrewsbury, though, is coming in November with a contribution from the statewide Community Preservation Trust Fund, which is estimated to provide a 30% return on our local receipts. All in, there will be over $1 million in FY23 for these quality-of-life projects. Our goal tonight is to hear from the board, the community preservation needs for Shrewsbury, as this will guide our committee on its charge of reviewing project proposals and moving forward recommended projects to town meeting for their approval. In addition to your input tonight, we leverage, we have been leveraging existing planning documentation, mainly the master plan, housing production plan, and open space and recreation plan. Further, we have also met with applicable boards and committees, and the CPC were holding, hosting a public forum on Tuesday, March 29th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Public Library to hear from the public. We strongly encourage the public to attend and provide input into how the CPA funds dollars should be spent in Shrewsbury. So with that, open up with questions?
So our listening tour, if you will, has, as Jason said, taken us all over town, talking to different boards and soliciting input. What we'd like to do are ask you the questions that we've asked other boards and committees, the same questions will be asked in the public next week. So we're wondering, you know, CPC funds can be used for, they can be used for historic preservation, affordable housing, open space protection, and outdoor recreation. What are, what do you see as our community's strengths in those areas, and what needs do you see? Any?
Oh, is this a quiz? I thought you were doing a presentation for...
We moved on to questions already. We know, you know what the CPC is.
Who wants to begin?
So I did my homework. I can start, I guess. I went through kind of the questions. You know, I think that there is so much that we can do, it's going to be really challenging to narrow the focus in the candy store kind of thing, right? You kind of want to do it all at once. And it's exciting to hear that there's going to be like a million dollars to sort of use and put towards these four areas of focus. You know, for me, I was kind of looking through on the Community Preservation website, and it took me to some link, and basically you can look at projects that were done in all of the communities that have community preservation funds to spend. And there's some really interesting projects, and it sort of got me thinking about things that we could do here in Shrewsbury. So I know you're asking about, like, what are our strengths? But I don't know, I guess I was focusing more on what are our needs. I think that we, I had to look harder for strengths, I guess, if I'm being honest. I think that we have some foundational areas of, you know, recreation, and, you know, the usual, the Dean Park, some trails, some things like that. But all of it just seems to need some refreshing. And so, again, it was harder for me to come up with strengths. I know that, you know, the historic markers on the Town Common, those were done, you know, recently. I know that the plaques on the library were refurbished recently. I think we talked about plaques on the Mountain View Cemetery that either need to be refurbished or have been refurbished, I can't quite remember. But I think that, like, those are sort of like the strengths, like, we take care of the basics. But for me, it's more question, the second question, you know, what are the needs that I'm really more interested in chatting about? So if anybody else has strengths and they want to jump in, I hate to jump ahead on your, you know, on your list of questions, but that's sort of where I was on strengths.
Sure. And of course, we're, you know, we are members of the community as well, so we know where, you know, the Dean Parks of the world, you know, but it really is just to hear, if you have something you really want to call out, like, you know, I really enjoy Lake Street Park, right? Or I really enjoy X, right? That's something just to call out tonight. But, right, our focus will be a lot more on the needs of it, is that's really how that, you know, the monies would be spent.
Because the purpose of the CPC is not for us to initiate the projects, but for us to steward projects that come from the community. So that's why...
Go ahead, Mr. DePaul.
I think, even though it seems like we don't have a lot of land, we don't have a lot of open space, but I think we have some significant town-owned parcels, and you mentioned Lake Street, Jordan Pond. Jordan Pond, not counting Coode Scores, we have, we own over forty-three acres around that pond, just as an example. We have Prospect, which, I know there's a plan with the cemetery, but there's still part of that property is planned to be used for passive recreation, kind of how it is now. I call it SAC, because that's the way I grew up calling it, but there's a lot of land around there. And some of it's the site proper, and then it's other pieces that are adjacent to it. So I think my point is, if the town decided that it wanted to do more with, more with passive recreation, I would think, but whatever, we have land to do it if we, if we wanted to do it. And I think having that land, and then we have the Maple App property, which we're using, we use most of it now, but there's a potential, somewhere down the road, maybe we'll work something out with UMass. So I think we have land to work with. I think part of the problem before was, we didn't, we didn't have the funds. And actually, it's one of the issues I have. But there's also a lot more private undeveloped land than we realize. And based on a discussion with the manager, when we talked about thinking about bringing it to town meeting, the thing about threatening the road out in Lake Street, we were talking about how there's no connectivity with our property. So in other towns, you can walk from X to Z, you can walk right away. And so from that discussion, and I've been talking to Mrs. McGee, keeping her in the loop, but I've been working on building that list of what the, that open space is. I mean, we, it's already on a map, we can identify it, but to try to put it together and catalog it so that if the town decides it wants to acquire more open space, there is open space there if people want to sell it. It's not a lot. We're never going to be Westboro or Northboro, because we're way beyond that, but there is land. And if we have the funds, I think there are opportunities to acquire more land and get some connectivity, and land we have, we could develop. I'd say that's the biggest strength we have as far as land.
Definitely. And I think with CPA, you do have that opportunity to leverage existing land, right, to do something with it, whether it be for active, active or passive recreation, or keeping it as open space, right, to, you know, for the habitat that it is, and just to have the scenic vista that wherever you see it need fit. Any other needs that your, you know, members of the community have come to you?
We're going, but...
I was going to say, at this point...
Whenever it's appropriate, I had something I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead. I was thinking that it seems like we're going from what are positives to our, to our needs, I think, is the natural regression of this, because as Mr. Molina said, we know what we have. But if that makes sense to you, we can...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So do you want to go with that, Mrs. Cassavan? You had started to go down the path of...
Sure. Sure. I have like a list. So I always see affordable housing as a need. I feel like I can't open up Facebook without seeing someone who's looking for an apartment that they can afford. And I think that there's an opportunity, and I know that there's probably some way to combine Community Preservation Act funds with Affordable Housing Trust funds to do more and give us more power. And I know that, you know, when apartments are built and things, units have to be kept affordable, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're affordable to everyone, and it's that kind of affordability where it's, it's below that market rate affordability that I'm looking for, right? So that maybe we're able to purchase, you know, a home and keep it in perpetuity as affordable. I mean, I'm sure there's all sorts of things that, you know, you've thought of, or that the Affordable Housing Trust folks can, can come up with, as they are experts and I'm not. But that I see as a need also. Edgemere Park is a park that I think really could use a little attention and love. I know that it's well-used, you know, by the people who live in the neighborhood that are obviously quite a distance from Dean Park. And I know that there's basketball hoops there and some benches, but none of it is really in great condition. I had an opportunity to be out knocking doors in that area last May, and was really struck by how that park could use a refresh. And then, of course, the one that everybody says, right, these are the ones that you're going to hear a hundred times, pickleball courts, right, a skate park, a dog park, a splash pad. Like, maybe it's time to really start thinking about these things, because we do hear them all the time, and I know when people say dog park, like, it gets the eye roll a lot of times, but, I mean, we do hear it quite a bit, and maybe it is something that the community wants. Then when I was on that website, some of the things that I didn't think of, studying invasive plants, like in the lake, or, you know, Flint Pond, I know I'm always hearing that on Lake Quinsig Commission meetings, they're having such issues always with invasive plants. And I wouldn't have thought of that. And then digitization and preservation of town records. Do we need to do any of that? And if so, is this something that, and it's not nearly as exciting, right, until you want those records someday, and you've got to go use those books that are up on the wall, I don't know what they're for. I think if you move one of them, like, a trapdoor opens or something, but, like, maybe we really do need to be thinking about digitizing things. Those are just thoughts that I had. There's a lot exciting.
I, if I'm, if I'm being honest, I think a lot of people that, that voted for this, that I've spoken to, really want to stop the growth and the development in town. So if I had to prioritize, certainly, I don't know if it's just open space, or it's just preserving the open space that we have. That is what I pretty universally hear from, from people that I've spoken to, and I will admit, this is not like a very frequent conversation that I have, but I did look at your questions in advance. And I agree with Beth that affordable housing is a need, and something that I feel we, we need to be, you know, better committed to and looking for opportunities for. In terms of the positives, I think, you know, Dean Park is a, is a positive, and, you know, the walking trails that we have, that we could do a better job of advertising for, but I feel like there are other fields that are either underutilized, or maybe if they had additional, you know, activities or draws to them, might be better utilized for the town. But I think there's also this perception that, you know, we have a couple of fields and absent, you know, the occasional baseball or softball game, they, they don't get used a lot, and maybe there's more we could do with that, that space that we do have. Thank you for everything you're doing, and I love that you're having these community conversations. It's really important, and I love your charge that you're really a voice for, for everybody else.
Thank you.
Right here, Mr. Libo. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for coming in and speaking to us. It would, it would seem to me that this is a broad-based tax, every property taxpayer in the town is paying for it, so I would like to encourage the CPA and those that come before the CPA proposing projects to initially think about what will benefit the greatest number of the population. And one can say all of our existing parks could be made better, but most of our parks are functioning, and I would say are functioning, you know, I don't have the evaluation tools, but I'd say at a good level. Let's, let's, Lake Street Park to me is something, we acquired that land, I think, in 1997, and it was always, for the purpose of putting a park there. There's never been the money to do that. I think there was some master planning that was done quite a while ago. That may need to be, not just refreshed, it might have to be done over again. But I would think transforming Lake Street Park from, I wouldn't put that in the good category, as I put some of the other parks in town right now, as far as services provided. So I would think for what could be done there, for passive recreation, for active recreation, if we put ball fields in there, it would be extremely beneficial. Following that, you know, I agree with some of my colleagues, affordable housing, I think, is something that should always be in the CPA's mind. And, you know, a rather vague suggestion for, you know, targeted strategic open space acquisition. But you can... But you can easily spend an awful lot of money for a very small amount of land. So that really has to be evaluated. But sometimes the right opportunity presents itself and I would think the funds provided by the CPA would be, as others members have mentioned, highly beneficial to a broad swath of the community.
Thank you, Mr. DePaolo.
Can I have a half note?
I think it's good that the CPA went through. I know we had disagreement over timing, but I think it was good. And I think it's going to be beneficial. I was particularly surprised at the actual around 790 as opposed to projected at like 450. I still don't understand how that happened because I actually did a calcula, I should have, I did a calculation too. I don't understand how we got so much more money, but we'll take it. Can I, first, I want to make a broader comment about where we're heading with the CPC, the Historical Commission, the Woodisland, the Housing Trust, and kind of how it all relates back to the strategic plan. I think it's good that we're all doing our things. I think it's a lot of good that's going to come out of it. But like, the Housing Trust, I mean, we're going to do housing, right? I'm a member of the trust, so we're not sure yet because it's a lot more complicated than we thought it was. But, so we have three or four different groups starting to work on things now because we've got the commissions and committees in place. And I've actually been talking to the manager and the chair about us, those boards basically, at least, getting together and come up with a, almost like a workshop for a common vision, make sure that we're all, we all agree that we're trying to head in the same general direction. We all have our niches, but those niches all should fit back into what's the overall strategy for the town. And this isn't directed at CPC. I'm just saying, we're on our way and we're doing things. And we got this strategic plan that we've invested a lot, or we are investing a lot of funds in. And I'm concerned about how are we going to keep pulling this into the broader umbrella? We don't even know what's going to come out of that plan yet. And in different places, we're starting to make plans based on our little spheres. So it's just a thought. I think collaboration and cooperation in this thing, I think it would go a long way. And I applaud you for coming out and going to all the different boards. The Housing Trust isn't, we're not anywhere near there yet, but we'll probably have to do the same thing. So I had a few comments and you guys can stop me when you want, but. No, what I was going to say was.
Call me if you like.
We had this discussion about, not about open space, but about parks and recreation, like 25 years ago. And it was a nice discussion and it didn't, nothing basically happened because we didn't have the money. So this, the whole thing of land preservation and recreation, both having the land for recreation and having recreation programs, it never went anywhere from that discussion. So I got a lot of years of pent-up frustrations. But I think it's important to realize that the parks, the playgrounds have been chronically underfunded for better than 30 years. It, there's always been an issue of, we just barely have enough to do maintenance. We certainly didn't have money except for when we had that debt exclusion to buy land. So I think now we have the opportunity, and I think to John's point, what we do needs to be strategic because it's great that we have money coming in. But once you start spending it, it doesn't go as far as everybody thinks. So I think, if I could jump down to the land, I think we do need a comprehensive list and that was part of why I was working on it and have collaborated a bit with Mr. McGee. Because if we're going to talk about buying land and being strategic, we need to know what's out there. And we need to know there's some big parcels and then there's some smaller parcels that might not look strategic except they abut other town-owned land. Particularly, it just happens to be around Jordan Pond, but SAC is the same way. So I think we need to have that list, so we get a catalog, so we can refer to it and know what's out there. And then we need to develop, and I don't really know if this is CPC thing, but I think we need to develop a strategy of how are we going to try to preserve this land? Are we going to try to buy it? Are we going to try to get development rights? Are we going to try to get property owners to use chapter 61? Because it all could work, but I think we have to decide how we're going to do it. And in recreation, you got the three big areas, well, you got four. You got Prospect, you got Dean, you got SAC, and you got Jordan Pond. Dean Park is a great resource. Dean Park is, it suffers from overuse. You know, with 38,000 people, we have one place that really is the park. And I think it's unfortunate that it needs, it's hard to keep the maintenance up when you're using it that heavily. So I think as we start to talk about land or using our land for recreation or passive or organized, I think we need to start thinking about spreading it out to take some of the pressure off of that park. I think it's a gem, but if we keep just reinvesting in that and not taking advantage of the other resources, we're not going to be much better off than where we are. I think we need to spread it out. And I do think that we need to think about, and I've heard a lot over the years about investing in passive recreation, which is primarily trails. You know, with limited resources, we focused, and I know that the leagues invested a lot of money in fields, but everybody's not, you know, 4 to 16 or 18 years old. And there are people who want to be able to be outdoors. So I think when we start talking about it, we got to talk about other things other than just organized sports. And I'm not saying we cut those back, but I think we need to think there's other parts of the population that want to take advantage of it. There was some, somebody made a note that I saw when I was putting this together about trying to get more public access to the lake. I don't know how you're going to get it, but I mean, that loss is out of the barn. But it is unfortunate that we have that lake and we have no access to it. But I think we blew that a long, long time ago. Housing, the trust will get going. I agree, we need affordable housing. How we do it, it's really, a lot of it's going to be dependent on money and just having the resources to actually try to find other money through grants and stuff. But it needs to be done. I think the interesting thing, people talk about stopping development and hear it, still hear it. In the 2000s, it was crazy, that's all you heard, about stop the development. Which is kind of interesting because some of the people complaining about it were the ones that are moving into town and it was changing. When Mr. LeBeau and I were growing up, there was a lot of open space here. We still were a big town, but there was a lot of open space. So I find that an interesting dynamic of people move here because they like it and then they don't want anybody else to, I know I'm being like way over the top, but, you know, cut the growth down because we don't want it to get any worse. And it's like, that's all relative to where you were in the timeline, right? I still think it's a great town, I still think there's opportunities. But I think more what we're dealing with now is not so much slowing the growth, but it's creating opportunities for people to live here. Everybody doesn't make $150,000 or $200,000 a year in a two-income family. The apartments down in Edgemere, a two-bedroom, somebody looked at it, told me it's $2,800 bucks a month, which is the going rate around here. So, I mean, that's, those aren't the affordables and those are whatever. But it's still, I mean, income-wise, it's still, that's still pretty high. So I will stop, I had some other stuff, but, oh, just one other thing. We started with the historic inventory, inventory. We started on that like 13 or 14 years ago, literally. We still don't have a completed inventory. We don't, that list is not complete. There's a list, but it's not complete. It's not, all the information is not there yet. We need to get that done. Somebody has to do it, I don't know who's going to do it. But somebody's got to work on that and do some basic legwork to know if, out of the 200 old houses there that may be historically significant, and I'm not saying they're not, but there's some subset of that that's not. And I think we need to know that. We need to know what's really important about what we want to try to save, preserve, whatever. And if we don't have that list finished, we're going to just be bouncing around just like we've been doing for the past 10 years. So anyways, despite the way I may sound, I'm excited about this. I think there's a lot of opportunities. Hopefully, people will get energized, you know, maybe a trails committee seeing they got some money, they get access to some money, might be able to get more people involved and work on that kind of stuff and working with CPC, whatever. I think it's a lot of great opportunities, exciting, but there's a lot of work but I think there's a lot that can be done. It's whether or not we have the people to do the work. But I really do think I'll wrap it up. I think we got to try to come up with a common vision. And I really think the strategic plan is where this all needs to come back. And we got to, I think we need to all be careful that, and I'll say the Housing Trust, right? Because I'm on the trust, so I can talk about the trust. But, you know, that we don't go off and come up with these great ideas, but they don't gel with what the community wants. That was the whole point of strategic plan. So I really think some of the key boards need to get together and talk and like we're doing now and just flush out ideas, but have everybody in a room. I know sometimes it's the zoo, but I think you got to do it to start the conversation. So I'm sorry it took so long, but that was 25 years in the making, so. We haven't had a lot of opportunities to talk about it, honestly. Anyways, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You shouldn't ask, though.
This is all very helpful because we are in the midst of creating the Community Preservation Commission's plan. And that will reflect the research we've done from the strategic plan, from the open space recreation plan, from the affordable housing plans. It'll reflect that, but also the feedback we get in these meetings. Where we're hard at work on that as well as developing the application, which some of the questions in the application will ask about, as Mr. LeBeau said, what's the greatest benefit, you know, who benefits from this project? And how does it relate to the goals stated in our master plan? So our hope is that it will all start to tie together, but we're not quite there yet.
No, but the strategic plan is new, it's current. So, and we're doing it. So that is supposed to be pulling it together.
Our plan will be dynamic, so when the new strategic plan is available, it will be reviewed and updated annually.
And we're going to have to do that with the Housing Trust. Anyways, thank you, appreciate the work you're doing. Hopefully, we'll come back in a year and say, wow, look at what we've done. That's great, thank you.
I really think so, I really think so. I mean, certainly to the coordination piece, a lot of communities that have CPC and Affordable Housing Trust, you know, they partner together on that affordable side, right, to say, the trust knows what they're doing and it's easier to just say if a town meeting approves that the money is to go to the trust, then they'll take advantage of the things that come up throughout the year as opposed to having to nickel and dime every single opportunity, right, to just be able to act on it quickly. Same thing if, let's say you had a conservation commission fund, right? That's another opportunity where monies could be fun to there and if the money was already there, available, that it could be expanded as an opportunity comes up quickly as opposed to having to wait for a yearly cycle for a town meeting approval. So, yeah, certainly coordination is key here, right? But, you know, we're a little broader right now and certainly the project proposals are brought to us, right, to review. So any members of the community, you know, watching us or department heads, you know, thinking about, hey, you know, we have an opportunity, they can raise these questions as well, we'll raise the deal as well. So they're talking about, you know, SAC Park, right? Well, let's get together and help fill out that document, right?
I think it's great you're getting a lot of ideas and then take it and distill it down to something. I think that's the best way to do it. Lot of work.
So I just have a few, I think, as Mr. DePaolo said, I think the most important thing, I think all of this is going to fall under the general category of quality of life. And I think that's going to be helpful to hear from the community what they're looking for. I think that will inform everything. Just general categories, just a little nuance view, but they generally cover everything. Affordable housing, I think that there are specific areas that we saw migration the 25 to 34-year-old range. I think it'd be interesting to try to target that, the lifeblood of our community. I think that and the 75 to 79-year-old ranges were the only age ranges that had left. We had a significant decline in 25 to 34-year-olds. That is our future. So that, I think, is a further focus and I think that's a broader strategy discussion. It's affordability. We know we don't have, you know, classic affordable housing, so again, everyone has said that, so I don't need to go any deeper. But I think it is a concern for me that younger people, we see it. We see younger kids come back as teachers, younger kids come back now to the police department than the academy, but they can't live here. And that's something we really need to look at as a community. These are people that come back. Why? It's a great community, but they can't afford here originally. So that's something I think we should look at, that is our future. Walkability, Dean Park, people walk in the road all the time. Is there an opportunity to make it ADA compliant, that people can walk along the roads? Can they walk in the woods if you're coming off Spring Street and you have the old stone picnic tables, which haven't been used since the 70s, but they were used, believe it or not? But even through there to make walking trails so people aren't on the road? Same with Edgemere. Edgemere to have, I mean, you have, I agree with Mrs. Cassavan, the ball field definitely could use a sprucing up. They have basketball courts there, but make that walkable so they're not walking in the road. Walkability there too. I think it just, rather than in the streets and allows more people to get out there, I mean, you're going 25 miles an hour through the park, you have people walking every which way. It'd be great if they could walk in the woods. And even down by the pond was paved over many years ago, that's all crumbled. So that and down near the Dean Park pond as well. But all of the open areas, trails or the likes, again, I think we saw with the pandemic, so many people got out and are walking around. Where can they do that with the gems that we have? We see that with the 14 acres of municipal field, 20 acres of foundation fields. There are opportunities on the outskirts for people to walk. The other thing, just the dog park, we've heard a lot, but I do think we have, Prospect Park is just an opportunity for that. It seems that that is where everyone brings their dogs anyways. Is that something that may be done? But other areas as well with pocket parks, pocket dog parks, can we do that around? So people can get together, if you go to the Boston Common, you see people from all walks of life with their dogs and all types of dogs, not the real big dogs, but the small dogs. But it's just a great way to socialize with existing open space that we have. So smaller things, I think that you've done great work getting out there, appreciate that. Appreciate your work getting this passed. I understand that we were, the timing issue, but you did really good work there and this is a real vibrant opportunity for the community, so I appreciate it. I think everyone's covered the other categories, it'll be interesting to see how it fits together. But I think it's just, the pandemic showed us that people want something to do. And we saw it even with the Yuletide event, 3,000 people outside. Think about that, the first year pre-pandemic, 2,300, now 3,000 people. This real sense of community. And can we provide more opportunities for that with parts of these projects? But we do have. But we do have the parks and the opportunities to do so, so that's all I have. I think everyone's covered everything else, and the skateboard park, we've heard, and we didn't have money for that, and the suggestion was that the foundation fields as well, but the, I think there are great suggestions here, you're gonna have great suggestion from the community, and I appreciate, we all appreciate everything that you're doing now and to date, and we look forward to the good work going forward.
Well, thank you. Certainly, it's it's been a lot of work, and we have a lot of work ahead of us as well. And, you know, I really encourage the the public to come to the to the public forum next Tuesday, six thirty to eight thirty. If you only have time for a little bit, certainly stop in any way, because we will be having interactive stations where folks can write their needs, community preservation needs on that on that board, and and, you know, we'll be taking all that feedback to consolidate it.
And there will be opportunities for those who can't attend to see the presentation, will be recorded online, and I believe we can use planning at shrewsburyma.gov for folks to send feedback or ideas, and they will get to us even if they can't attend.
So I do want to drop one other idea, is that, considering that we're approaching our three hundredth anniversary, right? And I think this is a great opportunity to look inward into Shrewsbury's history and say, what can we do as a community to celebrate three hundred years of incorporation? And it doesn't have to be just historic preservation, right? It could be anything that really celebrates our community, both the past and the future. So as we, you know, five years from now, we'll be celebrating, what can we do next year, these two years from now, to really highlight our town, right? And I think CPA, I I personally feel that CPA can be part of, you know, part of that that process in celebrating our town. And I'll say, one of the gems I'm hoping someone has an answer for is, where is the incorporation papers for Shrewsbury? You know, maybe it's it's in the vault, but I, certainly that would be great to to have that as a a gem to say, here's here's the deed that says, here is Shrewsbury, you're now on the map. And I'd like to see if there's a way to preserve that, if it's available.
You mean where we incorporated as a town?
Yeah.
The Charter from the King, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Gotta be somewhere.
That would be interesting.
Find it in the closet.
It's in the shoebox.
So, well, thank you all for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well done, thanks a lot. Now we're on to new business, to review, we're not acting on, but to review the warrant for the May twenty first, twenty twenty two annual town meeting.
Um, no.
Okay.
So, board members, we continue to refine the town meeting warrant. We are not in a position where I feel comfortable saying that the warrant is finalized, and therefore, as Chairman Samia mentioned, we are not looking for board action this evening, but I will take a few minutes to just run through the warrant articles that we're proposing, and I will not spend a lot of time on the traditional articles associated with the finances, but I'll touch on a couple others in some more detail. The moderator, as mentioned at a previous town meeting, will be bringing a proposal for consideration to amend the general bylaws to change from the use of Cushing's Manual to town meeting time as our rules of procedure at the town meeting. So that warrant article will be up for your consideration, including on the warrant. I will go through a series of of financial articles, which will include the options to amend the current year's operating budget and pay any prior year bills. We would, of course, bring the proposal to fund the fiscal year twenty three, next year's operating budget. We will be going through those proposed funding items with the finance committee over the course of two meetings. The first one's starting at six o'clock this Thursday for their annual budget hearing process. That meeting and hearing process will continue to Saturday morning at eight thirty, and will likely continue to the mid afternoon, and all department heads will participate, including a presentation from the school and school committee. We will be proposing to increase funding and add funding of about three million dollars into the override stabilization account, which is part of the plan that we laid out last year at this time when we sought the override. The three million dollars in funding is about a little over a million dollars greater than we anticipated being able to provide, and a lot of that has to do with the favorable funding position within, or with regards to the pension system, and stronger than anticipated local receipts, so that puts us in a great position as we've discussed when we started the the budget process in January. We'll be proposing a capital improvement plan of around two point five million dollars that uses free cash and general tax levy dollars to meet the capital needs. There's a lot of traditional items within the Department of Public Works area, and I just want to highlight one larger, non traditional acquisition in the police department, which is a four hundred and thirty three thousand dollar item to acquire a new records management and computer assisted dispatching system. We've utilized a system called Pamit for the last two plus decades. And while we have upgraded and improved that software with that company over those years, that company is no longer going to be in business, so we are starting the process of replacing that. And this is the, kind of the the nerve system of our day to day operations for the police department. It does everything from coordinates with nine one one phone calls to documenting all the actions of the police department and their official reports. So that is a large proposal that we'll be bringing forward to town meeting. We'll be funding our utility budgets and their respective capital improvement plans. We plan to make additions into the insurance trust fund, which provides funding for deductibles of our general insurance and workers' compensation insurance line items. We'll be making a deposit of almost a million dollars into our general stabilization of funds, uh, general stabilization fund. We're still working towards our five percent of the annual operating budget policy level. This will take another great step forward and get us to nearly four million dollars in the general stabilization fund. A couple other standing items I'll just touch upon, we'll continue to provide, or we're proposing to continue to find funding for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. And this year we'll be broadening the request for funding beyond just the Lake Quinzigman Commission and putting funds in place for the consideration of water quality and health in all lakes and ponds within the town. Surely the vast majority of those funds will likely be dedicated to Lake Quinzigman, but as we have neighborhood ponds that are associated with the watershed of Lake Quinzigman, we want to provide that opportunity, for the opportunity to at least study and manage water quality in other smaller bodies of water.
Do you have an idea of how much that's gonna be? Range?
We we plan to put thirty thousand dollars into the total account. Roughly speaking, that's consistent with prior years. One of the ponds that we're currently looking at that we may need to take some action was actually brought forward to, from a group of young residents around Mill Pond. There's growing vegetative growth in there, and whether it's invasive or not, the the water quality is declining, so that's something that we're taking a look at, that we may need to use some funding for.
Is that enough, given that we do, started doing Newton Pond, then we're doing the lake? And now, I I think it's a good idea we're doing the other things, but is it, what, and maybe I've just not remembering correctly how much money we were spending in the past, but.
Well, I mean, traditionally, we've put between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year in there, and as we study a pond like Newton Pond, it's more expensive in the first year, and then as we maintain and do the growth, it, you know, declines. So we think putting this fund, these dollars into kind of a more generalized fund and distributing them, that that's still sufficient amount of money. Gives us more flexibility throughout the course of the year. Board members, given our discussions and your goals and recommendations throughout the course of the year, we're proposing to request funding to develop a climate action plan, to find ways to reduce the town's greenhouse gas emissions. The town has an organization and inform residents on opportunities for them to do so as well. We will be taking on items associated with the Community Preservation Committee and Community Preservation Act as we need to make statutory dis- disbursements into particular accounts for those various categories in administrative funding. So it's a, this is, will become a routine action, and this year we'll actually have to account for the funds that we've already received and then those that we anticipate in accordance with state guidance for fiscal year twenty three. Moving forward, we would just move those statutory amounts for the ensuing fiscal year, and then if there are recommendations for funding through the CPC, those would be considered by town meeting after we make the statutory adjustments. There are a series of zoning bylaw amendments, which the board has been made aware of and have also been brought up to speed on this evening, by this request with regards to the limited industrial zoning districts. We're considering considering minor adjustments to the personnel bylaw, and the personnel board will be meeting in the coming weeks before you sign the warrant to make a final recommendation if any action is needed. We're proposing the consideration of a tree care and maintenance bylaw, which will help, again, with the environmental assets of the community and will also put us in a better position to be considered as a Tree City USA community. This will go part and parcel with our proposal for a tree planting program within the operating budget. We're considering four different articles to provide tax relief to property taxpayers within the town of Shrewsbury, which has been brought forward through conversations among the board and the assessing department. The Shrewsbury Retirement Board is proposing two articles for the board to consider on the warrant. One would raise the amount of pensioners' base pension that's subject to a cost of living adjustment. Currently, the first twelve thousand dollars is subject to a cost of living, annual cost of living adjustment, if one is necessary, and the remaining is not subject to a cost of living adjustment. Twelve thousand dollars is the minimum under state's law that has to be adjusted by COLA, and the maximum is eighteen thousand dollars. The retirement board will recommend moving that up from twelve thousand dollars to fourteen thousand dollars, and this has been a part of the plan, once the pension system was fully funded, to begin to consider the amount that's adjusted through the COLA. Now, the second article proposed by the retirement board would be increasing the calculation for the pension of individuals who are on disability retirement within the police and fire, from police and fire service. These individuals would be moved to fifty percent of the current wage minimum of the position that they were retired due to a disability from. So a patrol officer who may have retired, been disabled and retired in the late nineteen nineties would still be receiving a pension that's based upon their salary at the time and has not been adjusted upwards in any means. But this would move them to a more, hopefully, livable wage by moving it to fifty percent of the current patrolman's minimum step. We are considering proposing up to a hundred and twenty five transfers and designation of land that has been taken through tax title into general municipal purposes for future study and for future study, which may mean we designate them for other purposes, like permanent open space or other means. As properties sit in tax title, they become, excuse me. If they just sit in tax title, they're the least protected, and they're subject to adverse possession, so we would like to move these properties to protect the assets of the town. There are several properties that we're, small lots that we're considering requesting the board have an article to to be able to dispose of them, and we can provide additional details and maps to the board in the next week. There are two street acceptances that the board will consider the layout of later this evening. There is a proposal that has been discussed by the board of selectmen, and we're preparing a warrant article to make consider changing the name of the board of selectmen to a gender neutral name. And finally, of note, would be consideration of an amendment to the inter municipal agreement with the Westboro Treatment Plant. Currently, the inter municipal agreement was adopted prior to municipal reform. The transfer inter municipal agreement authorities from town meeting to the executive body, the board of selectmen. So there'll be an amendment made to reflect that and grant any future adjustments in this inter municipal agreement to the board of selectmen, which just make it much more oper- easy to operate if any changes are needed with our, in our partnership with the town of Westboro and Hopkinton. So currently I have approximately forty seven articles for your consideration at this time, and we will continue to refine them and provide updates to the board for your consideration at your next meeting.
So the plan would be to take up the warrant and approve the warrant on the fifth? Okay. Any questions or comments? Mr. DePaulo?
We signing the warrant on the fifth? Oh, we have a time constraint, right?
April fifth, right.
Yep. We do, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, so we'll look forward to taking that up on the fifth. So no, no further questions, we'll go to the next item, and the agenda is to review and act to amend the charge to the Police Station Building Committee, Mr. Mizikar.
Board members, as the American Rescue Plan Act continued to evolve and the final rule came out earlier this calendar year, it presented us with an opportunity to be able to have more broad use of those funds. With that broad use of the funds, we thought it might be an opportunity to continue the work that was started prior to the pandemic, but halted due to the pandemic, which includes much needed renovations of the town hall. So with that, we are seeking to amend the charge of the Police Station Building Committee to allow them to oversee the use of fifty five thousand dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds to further explore renovation options for the town hall. Ultimately, American Rescue Plan Act funds could be used for a renovation project, which would reduce the cost to the taxpayer and be opportunistic. But we're just really in the preliminary planning stages from that. One design concept was presented under the original appropriation from town meeting, and this funding would allow up to three additional alternatives. So what we have before you this evening is amendment to the charge of the Police Station Building Committee to allow that sitting building committee to have an expanded charge to include those three design options for the town hall.
Any questions or comments?
We're ready to do it.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have it moved in second, and all of, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next end, item on the agenda is to review to act to disband the BL RFP, BL Reuse Committee, and Mr. Mizikar, this is similar to what we did to the DEI task force at our last meeting. Their charge has been fulfilled, and this is just to disband that committee.
Correct.
Move approval, second.
Have it moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Similar to our last meeting, review and act to approve the minutes of the BL RFP Reuse Committee. There are two sets of minutes, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, and March fifth, twenty eighteen, as written, same as last time. Last meeting with DEI, no sense to having that in this loop of the committee reconvening just to approve minutes.
Move approve.
Second.
Have it moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Fourteen, the minutes of DEI, October fourth is written.
Move approval.
Second.
Have it moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, to review an act on amendment number two to the inter municipal agreement between the city of Worcester and the town of Shrewsbury for public health services, colleagues, this extends by one year. The inter municipal agreement between Worcester, in which it provides the town with certain public health services. There are a few amendments that are in amendment number two, specifically the contract sum, which is the sum of seventeen thousand three hundred eighty three dollars and forty four cents per month, total sum of two eight, two hundred eight thousand six hundred one dollars and thirty one cents. the contract sum, which is the sum of $17,383.44 per month, total sum of $208,601.31. This is the description of what it's reflective of, and it extends the term by one year.
Move approval.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item, it's to review an act to lay out Commerce Drive and a portion of Lake Street. Mrs. Loss, if you could take this one, please.
Sure, thank you Chairman Samia. It's common for town meeting to accept layouts of roadways for public purposes, and this year, the Engineering Department and Planning Department have reviewed two roads for your review. One is the layout of Commerce Drive in its entirety, that is off of Route 20, and the other is a portion of Lake Street. This is a portion of Lake Street, proximate to the new Beal School. As you may recall, a portion of that street was relocated due to the location of the school and to make that safe intersection. So we have a process that we follow related to street acceptances, where we require the developer and their engineer to supply the engineering department with proper documentations, drawings, and layouts, which they have for both of these roadways. The Planning Board has supplied a letter, and I do have an updated letter for each road individually here, that they held a public meeting on March 3rd to consider the layouts and the roadway acceptances, and the Planning Board recommends those to move forward with the board processing their next step. So that is before you this evening for the board to lay out their intent to move forward with the layouts of Commerce Drive and a portion of Lake Street and hold the appropriate public meetings necessary and place those items on the town meeting warrant.
Can I ask?
Mr. DePaul.
A few years back, we created an operational policy that the developer would have to meet certain criterias, like make sure the granite markers and all that are in. Enough, I'm going back to look, but I think it was by February, they had to have that stuff done to avoid what was happening at town meeting, we have to ask town meeting to vote it down. Both of these, are they ready to go?
Yes.
Like, there's nothing outstanding with them?
That is our understanding.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Move we adopt the recommendations made by Assistant Town Manager Loss to move this process forward.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to review an act on the reappointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mary Beth Lynch to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a two-year term, set to expire on March 31st, 2024. Anne Raffolo to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 31st, 2024. Peter Mulcahy to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the same two-year term to expire on March 31st, 2024. Kevin Byrne, then Kevin Byrne, Matthew Armenti, and Kevin Nisbet, each as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-year term to expire on March 31st, 2023.
Move the board make the reappointments as outlined by the chair.
Can I purpose for, I mean, a second for the purpose of discussion? I was under the impression, and I guess mistakenly, that we had started advertising for these positions, whether people, current seeing members on any of the boards that we appoint, wanted to be reappointed, that we were advertising. I thought we started that up again when Mr. Kane was here. I, I, I'm not looking to necessarily not have somebody reappointed here, but I think we have an issue with somebody has to decide, based on our policy, and they haven't notified us yet, that the person hasn't notified us, that which board that person wants to sit on, because we changed that, we came up with that policy of one person, one board, and we made a couple of exceptions because people were in the middle of something. We don't, we don't know the answer to that question right now, I think it just kind of surprised us. But the ZBA, as it sits right now, is good till 31st of March. After that, we got a couple of weeks. I really think, and it, you know, I would have brought this up before, but with the Beal thing, I got distracted, really think that we should be advertising, put it out there for two weeks, see if anybody's interested, and see what we want to do. And so we could, we could do this in the first, you know, on April 12th, we could have the information if we wanted it and do it. It's not going to affect the ZBA, because they don't meet again till closer to the end of the month. But I really think we should be doing that. Going to people's, talking about it's hard to get on a board and stuff like that, and they don't apply. How much have we heard that over the past few years? And that's why I thought we did it, and apparently, that wasn't our policy, but it's the manager's policy now, right? I thought we were both doing it, so I mean, I throw it out to the board, I really think we should wait till the 12th, I think we should put a notice out tomorrow if anybody's interested. If no new people come forward, then no new people come forward, but I still think we should afford the public an opportunity to make their intentions known if they want to do it, so.
So I hear you. I guess when I'm looking at this for the two-year terms, most of these people have been recently appointed or in the last few years, and to me, seem to be hitting the stride with knowledge. I don't have a problem if we want to revisit that going forward, but I'm comfortable, personally, I'm comfortable with the slate in front of us in the meetings that I've watched. This group that's up for the two-year appointment is on the relatively junior end, so I'd be comfortable with a motion that has been seconded to accept or to these reappointments or approve these reappointments, but we can take this discussion up at a later time.
They have three-year appointments? In this, in the alternates of one-year appointments?
No. Two years.
The ZBA?
Yes.
It's two years.
Really? Then with three. Sorry, my fault.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree that on a go-forward basis, I would like to see us advertise any board or committee opportunities. In this situation, however, I agree that these individuals have indicated their desire to continue, that we have received feedback from the appropriate departments, that they do recommend them to be continued. I agree that the stability of that board should take precedence, so I also am in favor of approving these reappointments this evening, but agree that not only would I love to see us advertise these, but I really think that this year, one of my focus areas is going to be on how we can proactively get in front of the community well before town elections, town meeting members, board and committee, and just give more information on what opportunities exist and how to get involved and help people determine if it's something that they want to do. So, again, agree that, would like to see what Mr. DePaul is proposing on a go-forward basis.
So we comfortable with, we've been moved in seconded, so we have a standing motion. Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable voting tonight, but Mr. DePaul is correct, a year ago tomorrow, this board adopted Policy 28, and the board needs to reconcile Policy 28 with its actions.
If I may, I don't see what the harm is in waiting until the 12th, it's not going to affect the operation of the committee. I mean, if everybody wants to move ahead, fine, I'm not going to throw a monkey wrench into it. I really feel strongly that we should wait, but if the person board wants to, fine. I don't have any particular issue with anybody on this list, so I just want to be clear about that. I'm just trying to follow what I thought our new policy was, and apparently, it's not written that way, I guess.
Mr. Chairman.
Part of it is.
So just to follow up on what Mr. LeBeau was saying, so I was sitting here reading that policy, and it says, you know, in the case of a member who's been serving on a board committee commission, term is expiring, notice will be sent to the person asking him to respond to the board indicating whether or not they're interested in being reappointed, but then there's never any follow-up to that that I'm seeing that basically says this position is still going to be advertised. And again, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that might be missing from our policy.
Yeah.
It doesn't say it.
I think the policy needs to be rewritten.
I think we need, so.
Then we can make that change going forward.
I just don't think that it's, I just don't think that we should be applying a policy that's, you know, we're applying a policy to this, but it doesn't say it in the policy. So I think we need to vote this tonight.
I agree.
And then revisit the policy if our intention is, even if you're interested, we're still going to advertise your position. I just, I think that's what we need to do.
I really just don't think it should be any different than elected officials, yeah, some people want to do another term, but you know what? The voters might decide they don't.
Yeah.
So.
I don't disagree, I just think the policy needs to reflect that.
Right.
Before we make.
Then, then I would request that on April 12th, we have this on the agenda, to deal with it.
That works.
That's fine, just think of the other side, though, and I'm fine, we should have the discussion, look at the policy again. But the other side of this is if someone, we all know it takes a while to get up to speed, and if someone's on it for two years and then we're throwing it back out there, just it could be a disincentive for people to do it, too. No one should have a committee for life, I get that.
I definitely be clear, I'm not saying I, there is no reason, I don't have an issue with anybody on here, I'm talking about the policy and the principle of it.
I got you, I understand.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Considering it's March 22nd, I would suggest the board withhold doing any further action on the policy until after the election.
That's fine.
I'm fine with whatever, I just don't think we can hold off on this based on a policy that isn't clear.
I, so we have a motion in a second on the floor, we've had any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so it passes 5-0, but we will look at this in the future. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the reappointment of Lynn Youngren to the registrar of voters for a three-year term to expire on March 31st, 2025.
Move approval.
I'm sorry, but it's in a different place.
Second. Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item, 19, will be moved out to April 5th to review an act on appointment. Appointed member to fill the vacancy on the registrar of voters for a term set to expire on March 31st, 2023, that will be, next meeting, we will push that out on April 5th. So now we go to correspondence. Item 22, email dated March 7th, 2022, at 5:39 PM from Jennifer Roy, Marketing Manager, Green Meadows, regarding cannabis education event at Polar Park, so noted. And items 23 through 30, beginning March 8th, 2022, at 3:48 PM, and the last one received at March, on March 12th, 2022, at 8:24 PM, all related to the Beal School redevelopment, so noted. Next item is number 31, email dated March 12th, 2022, at 9:29 AM, from Jean-Marc Gargat, 23, Apollusa Drive, regarding a letter been written to the board and responded, so noted. Next item is email dated March 16th, 2022, it's at 6:01 PM, from Nicholas Waldrin, Administrative Operations Assistant, New England Water Science Center, regarding Blackstone watershed comments due March 25th, so noted. Next item is a letter received March 18th, 2022, 3:14 PM, from Keith Elms, Town of Shrewsbury Animal Control Officer, regarding a request for hearing under Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, regarding two dogs. Regarding two dogs, we'll be handling that on our next meeting on April 5th, so noted. So another dog hearing, okay. And then next item is a letter received March 18th, 2022, at 3:21 PM, from Shonda B. D. Green, Department Secretary, Department of Telecommunications and Cable, regarding a license expiration notice, so noted. So that's it from a formal part of the agenda, and now we need to go into executive session, so I'm seeking executive session for the following reasons. Under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board, Davis v. Town of Shrewsbury et al. And under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions to, in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager.
So moved.
Have been moved in seconded, if roll call vote is required. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. DePaul?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
The board will now convene, motion passes unanimously, the board will now convene into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board, and General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. The board will not reconvene back into open session. Thank you for joining us, and we'll see you on April 5th. Good night.